Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this December 10th, 2024. I'm pleased today that for our invocation, we have Pastor Zach Carden here with Marietta Community Church. He will be bringing our invocation followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Randy Green. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and our pledge.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of living in the United States of America. We thank you that we are one nation under God. We're under your wisdom, we're under your power, we're under your authority. And Father, we are praying for a measure of that wisdom in decisions that are made today. We pray for the commissioners, we pray for their families, we pray that for all the things that may be going on in their world, that you continue to minister to them as they minister to and serve the public. Father, we pray for every issue that comes along today that would be met with discernment and compassion, but wisdom from on high. Father, we pray for a spirit of unity and a spirit of peace as each individual issue that arises here today is met with the kind of wisdom that you've given these men and women just in their lives and through their experiences. So Father, we pray that you will grant that and that you will grant your peace. We thank you for the season that we're in. We pray that you will bless everyone here in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call to order. I'm pleased that we have two presentations that are before us today. The first presentation is with respect to an entrepreneurship and innovation grant. For our business that's here with respect to that grant, please join our Commissioner and our Economic Development Director up front.
Good morning. Good morning. Congratulations. So I'm honored to present-
Commissioner, need a mic?
I don't need a mic.
Good morning, everyone. We're here to celebrate an economic development award for $5,000 to A Better Today Books and Boutique. And this is the owner, and Sabrina's going to tell you a little bit about the program and how she won, was selected, and we're just excited and thrilled that you're in my district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the recipient of the entrepreneurship grant today is Dr. Viola Lanier. She's the owner of A Better Today Books and Boutique, which is a charming bookstore on Schallford Road in Marietta. She's been a Cobb County resident for 17 years, and she's thrilled to fulfill her entrepreneurial dream in a community she loves. Her store offers a serene space featuring a curated collection of books and specialty gifts aiming to inspire well-being and self-care while celebrating the adventure of reading. Dr. Lanier grew up in the Bronx, and books took her around the world, exposing her to diverse cultures and beliefs. She's a former cancer researcher with a PhD in biomedical sciences from Morehouse School of Medicine, and she's grateful for the support of her local community. She helps the bookstore becomes a Cobb County staple empowering residents to create a better today. So the Cobb County Entrepreneurship Grant is a competitive grant that is funded by the Development Authority of Cobb County to support entrepreneurs and startups in the county. And better today, Dr. Lanier, she applied for the grant, was vetted by our outside stakeholder committee, and was approved for $5,000. So we thank you so much for doing business in Cobb County. Would you like to share?
Share quickly. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm really grateful. As she mentioned, I've been in Cobb County since 2017, and I initially started out as a middle school science teacher here, and I had left my full-time career to literally go back to school and pursue the biomedical sciences and cancer research. It was a unique kind of switch to go from having that career, which I still do, to opening a bookstore. And so the uniqueness of that is what I love. And so A Better Today Books and Boutique is in fact a unique bookstore, it's not your regular bookstore where you walk down tons of aisles. It has a serene and whimsical feeling, it has the nonfiction books that focus on encouraging what we're called, A Better Today, because we want to be well in the areas of emotionally, physically, financially, spiritually, all the areas we want to be well in, as well as fictional books. So I want to thank Cobb County for providing us with this award because in fact, it really helps us to financially launch as a small business in the community in a way where we have less financial concerns, and we can really focus on the community, and it helps us to have a better start so we can help, continue to help others to have a better today. Thank you.
Thank you. And those who are here as part of our next presentation to Life University, please join me up front. Very happy to be here to honor Life University as they celebrate 50 years here in Cobb County. Sidney E. Williams with the vision of advancing chiropractic care and holistic health practices. It has since grown into a premier institution, offering a wide range of academic programs that prepare students for leadership roles in healthcare, business, psychology, and other disciplines. And whereas Life University has been a driving force in the field of chiropractic education, producing thousands of graduates who are now making a positive difference in communities worldwide, advocating for health and wellness, and advancing the principles of preventative care. And whereas the university has partnered with local businesses, organizations, and healthcare providers to enhance the quality of life in Cobb County and beyond, supporting community health initiatives, providing employment opportunities, and contributing to our region's development. Whereas Life University's success is a testament to the vision of its founders, the dedication of its faculty and staff, and the determination of its students who together have created an environment of learning, innovation, and service that continues to grow and thrive. And therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of Life University and commend the institution for its outstanding contributions to education, health, and the well-being of our community. This the 10th day of December 2024. Congratulations.
Well, good morning, and thank you so much for this honor. I'm Dr. Joel Marsh. I'm the Vice President, Life University, and joining me today is Danya Hanai, who was raised in Cobb County and is our Senior Development Officer. But we're proud of this 50-year accomplishment, and we've been a staple in Cobb County. I know that for many of you, you know Life University because of its chiropractic program and the lights of life, which are actually even more beautiful this year than ever. So if you haven't gone through our campus, please do that. But more importantly, we have educated students from more than 60 countries and students from every state in the Union. We're that not-so-little university that's making a better change for our world. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. We'll line up. I'll turn things over to you, Bill.
As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Excuse me, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. That being said, the first public speaker is Denny Wilson.
My last public comment here was that MSPLAS would not pass. The funny thing is your consultants told the MDJ on the first survey that two-thirds of the voters in Cobb approved of the MSPLAS. MDJ later printed closer to the election that two-thirds of the voters didn't even know that MSPLAS would be on the ballot. And then on Election Day, MSPLAS failed, by two-thirds of the voters voting against it. I hate to say I told you so. Someone sent me a copy of your legislative agenda, and my eyes went straight to the home rule topic on that legislative agenda. Now why would the state grant you greater powers with home rule when you've clearly shown that you have more power than the General Assembly by implementing your own maps? I mean, after being told by one judge and being scolded by the Georgia Secretary of State on the constitutionality of the maps, they were finally struck down by a Superior Court Judge, and you still haven't given up. You're still pushing on with this. Every citizen in this county should email the General Assembly and speak out against any additional home rule powers being granted to you guys. Because you've clearly demonstrated that you are above the General Assembly by implementing these maps and following through for, what, almost two years, which disrupted the voters in this county. I will be sending an email to every member of the General Assembly in the House, in the Senate, and also to the Governor, the Attorney General, and every legislative body at the state level that controls the lawmaking in this state to advise them not to grant you any additional powers on home rule because your powers is what hurts the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Hill Wright.
Hill Wright, while the event was tense and unpleasant, no apparent department policies have been violated. Let's see what Cobb Department policies permitted on December 2nd. I saw lasers from a firearm. At the time, I thought to myself, oh my God, they're going to tase my dog. Then I heard a pop. I was so wrong. I think even said, did you just tase my dog? And just snapped back with, no, he effing- And just snapped back with, no, he effing killed her. She's dead. This man used lethal force to murder my sweet Zeta. But that's not all. It felt like slow motion when my head turned around toward the door, because I heard high-pitched screams. They were my three kids, 10, 9, and 7, watching the family members twitch and fall and fight for her life. Jackson screamed, they shot Zeta. They shot her. While the other two stood too stunned to move, I saw their faces scotch up and let out a well of pain. They watched someone who has sworn to protect his servant shoot a dog who was being a dog. My heart immediately leapt into my chest as my brain finally caught up to what happened. I lowered my head over her body. She was fighting so hard to keep alive, blood spurting on the side of her head closest to the pavement. And I took a look at what he just did to my baby. He shot her through the eye socket, took it completely out. Her remaining eye was rolling in the back of her head as she went into shock. She was attempting to run, or at least moving her legs in a running motion, while her body was twitching. I can't even count the number of times I've told her, I am so sorry, baby. I'm sorry. This isn't right. She shook and shook. I pleaded, please let's put her into a car and take her to the emergency vet. It might be okay. But they said, no, it's too late, Angel. Zeta had started peeing and pooping on herself, and her body was trying to pass. Finally, after several minutes of my dog outward suffering and dying, they left. Justin did what he had to do for our girl. He showed up with great compassion by putting her out of her misery. Luckily, at this time, my mom walked around back with my hands and hers over my ears and my own screaming, blanketing his gunshots. There's still a stain on the white concrete today. There's even a bigger stain on Cobb County and what's on the agenda today. Giving Cupid more slush funds for PR for her advocacy and spending more in budgeted dollars. I say put those things on hold, and let's have a real conversation about how you're going to make sure department policies don't murder another family member.
The next public speaker is Tracy Stevenson.
I'd like to talk a little bit today about a subject that I keep commenting on, on Next Door and other places, that seems to go nowhere. It's the affordable housing conversation. The first thing I think we've got to do is we've got to solve for X. Somebody needs to tell me what affordable means. There's got to be a number assigned to it. What is an affordable rent? What is an affordable mortgage amount? I, as a general contractor for most of my life, have built a lot of things, and never once did I sit down in a design meeting that we didn't come up with a number first that we were working towards. We need a number. At the end of the day, it's pretty simple math for most builders. I'm going to give you an example. You buy a developed lot for $100,000. You're going to have to put a house on there that's going to build out at about $300,000. So you're going to start with a $400,000 sales price. That's just the way the math works, and that's a minimum. A lot of times, it's a four times or five times. Okay? So it all starts with affordable dirt, and that's the point we seem to be missing. At the end of the day, when we build high-density stuff like townhomes and so forth, the cost per square foot or per acre of property rises, because that's how they make their math work. All right? So you build this high-density development, that raises this price per acre, and it moves on to the next development. How about we just step back and we go, what are the numbers we're solving for? I'm tired of hearing politicians talk about affordable housing to raise money for campaigns and not solve the problem. I've been in here over 30 years. In the last 10 years, I've heard affordable, attainable housing until I just can't stand it. How do we get there if we can't solve for X? What is the number? All right? If you want people that are in the industry that actually know things, I'll do it for free. You don't need to hire a consultant. I would be glad to help. But we got to have a number to work towards. And at the end of the day, I think that the starting point is the county owns a heck of a lot of property that they've foreclosed on and so forth. If you started with some free dirt and a public-private partnership with a developer that you could set a number that say 200,000 is the sales price, okay? Then that's a beginning point. But if nobody's ever going to identify a number, alls we're going to do is have this circular conversation. It's catch-22 in its own right. How about we have politicians that'll stand up and go, let's post some numbers. All right? And then we can move forward. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Benz.
Appreciate your service and guiding the county, hopefully for a better future. I feel like the MSPLAS was an attempt to do that, and I think you made an attempt to get that information to the county and to people, but it really wasn't enough. As a citizen, I did go to the website where the literature was and all the information, and it was very informative, it was educational. I didn't feel like, from what I was reading, that it was biased in any particular way. My understanding is that was what the county spent the $280,000 for, was with that particular firm, and their job was to produce literature and to produce information that was not slanted one way or the other. I presume that was also approved by council before that was posted. There has been some people who have felt like perhaps that was not the case, but I think the evidence shows otherwise. The only, if you would say biased, direction would be, I think it was from Freedom From Traffic, which was a privately funded group. And they used none of the information that the county produced, because their ballot initiative, where they were determining what information to put out to influence people, showed that the county information did not have any effect whatsoever. So if you were trying to influence the vote in a positive way, that information, from what I understand, did not really have much bearing on that. So again, you know, thank you for at least giving people the opportunity to consider that initiative. I really wasn't convinced until I heard a presentation from a speaker. And when he presented what the actual benefits would be for that, and how it affected, and how quickly it would go into effect, that actually convinced me to support the MSPLAS. But I would not have necessarily thought that based just on the information coming from the county. So anyway, support your in your efforts. It's good to support things, even when they don't win. Right? You have to get information out and cause people to think. So thank you very much.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners. Christine Rosman. I'd like to talk about trust and honesty. From what the previous speakers had to say, I think that that's where the gap is. We want to trust you. We confirm or convey what we would like to see in our county. And it seems like you don't trust our perspectives and what our ideas are. And you have a lot of very smart people that live in Cobb County. You don't get a bunch of people that don't know anything. You get a lot of people that have seen the ropes, been around, however you say it, that can really provide a lot of good information, and probably even more applicable information than what, say, ARC and Deloitte and Accenture might be feeding you. And so what happens is that we think that you trust us, and when you have these experts that are telling you what to do, that it seems that you trust their perspectives, as opposed to people that have been living in this county for a long time, living in this country for a long time, that we don't want to be like the rest of the metro Atlanta. And if you want to have individuality, if you want people to express themselves, yet we're not allowed to, because that ends up being not in accordance with what ARC wants or what the experts want. And I can't remember what it was, a year ago, there were meetings, it may have been on SPLAS, around the county. And there were a lot of us that went to a lot of those meetings, and I guess in a way hijacked it to say, hey, here's what's really going on, here's what's really at stake. And it seems like you did not want to hear that, because the next time, when I think the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, information came about, that you ran concurrent meetings so that there wouldn't be any momentum from we, the people. So then that makes us not trust you, because the people that have the information, that have been consultants, that have been in the industry and are saying, whoa, 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 red flag, they weren't given the chance. And so just do the right thing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good morning, Commissioners, and my name's Craig Harfoot. I wanted to, you know, I came to the Ethics Board meeting, and nobody, none of the board members showed up to conduct it. That was bad. Now, this year, I actually got to the tax assessor's office, appealed my assessment, and, you know, that was the whole thing why I ever showed up at any of these meetings, was that what I learned, and I did a sampling of a lot of properties in my area, they got acres in non-subdivision property. In East Cobb, and I didn't get into the other counties, but y'all might want to look into it, $400,000 an acre. And you're taxing people with .8 acres, 1.6, .6, doesn't matter, anything, it's all zoned for half-acre lots. Most of these properties have one house on them and can't put another house. And as you see, and like the ADU, it wouldn't even work for me with .8, because it's in the drain field for the septic system, and you can't tie it to the sewer, and because there's a high-pressure pump up the hill. And I just want you to understand that. But the thing is, at $400,000 an acre, and I think I heard, when we bought Parkland and financed it with bonds, you know, because we took away the hotel motel tax, the Fund the Brave Stadium, and now they want a roof. But anyhow, the thing was, you paid too much for Parkland. And then it becomes part of the comps for all the property, and how are you ever going to have affordable housing in Cobb? And the other part is, density drives taxes up. Makes the fire more, makes the police more, makes everything more. And then that was the excuse for buying the Parkland. Oh, the lots are too small, kids can't play in the yards. I mean, it goes on and on. And then they gentrified Marietta and get rid of all the public housing. They did it in Atlanta. That's why we had an exodus to Cobb. So, yeah, you need a lot of people thinking what we got to do, and I don't think transit's the idea. I mean, the square, if you look at the square, people lived above their shops. They came to town with their goods and they traded, and that was with horse and wagons. And it's like, if you don't have planned communities, you know, you don't have anything for transportation. You can't commute to Atlanta. That's not a great idea at all. Thank you.
As the final speaker of the first portion.
Thank you, Bill. We are now at our consent agenda, Commissioners, and the matters on the consent agenda have scrolled on the screen prior to the meeting, and will scroll on the screen after our meeting. I do have a couple of revisions to our consent agenda. The first one is for Agenda Item Number 5, respect to Green Court Legal. The second one is with respect to transportation, Item Number 13. And this is all that I'm seeing here. Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's anything else. Commissioners, are there any other changes or observations to be made with respect to consent? Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I did have a question come in about Item Number 26. And so I would like to just make sure that that question is on the record for transparency's sake, so to move that from the consent to the regular agenda, and that's regarding the KSU bonds.
Okay, so we will pull and hear Agenda Item Number 26.
Thank you.
Are there any other observations? I know there's a statement that you typically follow, Commissioner Burrell and Commissioner Gamble.
And then if the clerk could record the statement as is found on Page 303 of the current agenda. Thank you.
So with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items that are on our consent agenda, as it has been revised, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Okay, we can have a second motion. You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to state my opposition to Number 25, the consultant for economic development. Nothing personal against Sabrina. She and her staff do a great job. I just, I didn't vote for the consulting for this, because it is, their economic development is one of the components in our strategic plan. So I didn't feel the necessity to hire additional consulting.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners or questions? Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like to also note my opposition to Item Number 25. And my reasoning is ours, because to me, we are duplicating services that the chamber is to be doing within the county.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0, and please note Commissioner Burrell and Gamble's opposition to Agenda Item 25. With that, we've had Agenda Item Number 26 pulled from consent, and we'll just ask that be presented before the Board. Give me one moment. Commissioner. Yes, please.
Item 26 is asking, requesting that the Board adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Finance Authority to issue student housing revenue bonds, Series 2025, and one or more of its series to benefit the KSU Foundation, which is a Georgia nonprofit corporation.
Please.
Thank you, and thank you so much for, it's like a party up here, being here. And really, the questions are pretty, there's one that's around the finance impact to this, and then the second one is just our role within this process. And so I wanted to make sure that that was on record on exactly what the impact was. And so the question was, these bonds, what the impact would be to total revenue for the county? And then if there's been an analysis on what that impact could be to the budget? And just so everybody understands a distinction, total revenue does not equate to impact to our budget because of how dollars get allocated when they're collected, so.
So Commissioner, we'd like to answer that kind of two parts, kind of what we have as a history, what we anticipate, and then we brought the team up here to kind of answer what that process may look like. So just to kind of give you an idea, because of the ownership prior to this, last year's tax assessed value and anticipated property tax revenue for the general fund was about $244,000, and we anticipate that coming off our digest eventually. So I do want them to clarify the process of how that would happen, but that is our anticipation in the long term of what that would look like.
Okay, thank you.
So if you could walk through that process. So if you could walk through that process of kind of what we expect as next steps.
And before we get, I do just want to also state, because this was a question that came in from a constituent about this item.
Yes.
But certainly, when it comes to certain types of deals and transactions, monetary impact is not supposed to be a part of our consideration as well. But I do want to make sure for everybody's awareness what that impact could or could be.
That is correct. And the reason we have to approve this as taxing authority, so we have to approve this, it is basically just part of the procedural process. We have several of these outstanding with a variety of authorities throughout the county. So this is just kind of the final stamp of approval in the process.
Thank you.
If you could walk through the process.
Yeah, sure. Stephen Bridges, CFO of the KSU Foundation. The KSU Foundation's sole mission is to support KSU and its students. Our ability to transact on this particular property will, we will seek, once we have purchased the property and we put, confirm that all students live there, we will seek an application process to exempt those taxes. And that will happen, I believe, at the first of this year, if we can continue on the same schedule.
Thank you, thank you. And as far as this resolution, from what I understand, this is an administrative component that we have.
That is correct.
We're not really making a decision on bonds, allocations, et cetera.
It is simply administrative function for approval. And again, the county has no obligation for the debt service of the bonds as we move forward.
Correct, all right, thank you.
Yeah, just to, I'm curious from the gentleman who just spoke from the foundation. So this is currently a student housing property, but it's owned by a private owner. But there may be habitants that are not students that need to be phased out of the property?
Yes, ma'am. We're still, we're working through confirming that. I think that they follow fair housing rules currently.
Okay. Just in, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I had some emails too regarding this. And I reached out to Nancy Gallagher, County Attorney, who gave me a thorough explanation. And so I guess all the Commissioners didn't get that. But this is a Tefra bond, so the county's not on the hook for anything. But we will see what you were saying, the $240,000 tax revenue, because KSU will not pay taxes on this. However, once it becomes campus, our police won't monitor that. Well, I mean, they could get called in, but your campus police will be, will have jurisdiction over that housing. And the other thing, the Bixby was built prior to our purpose-built student housing ordinance was in place. So it doesn't have all the requirements that the newer, in unincorporated Cobb, private housing does. So, and your staff at KSU are familiar with our requirements for that. So just a suggestion, you may want to look into making those improvements once it's turned over to the school.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do any other Commissioners have any comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Did you have any additional? Okay.
No, thank you.
All right. With that, we had a motion and a second. Oh, no motion, excuse me. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioners?
Um, so moved.
Yes? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, Commissioners? We'll call the question. Thank you, thank you for approaching. That now takes us to the regular agenda. And the first tab is my tab, a continuation of a matter from, I believe, our last fiscal cycle. Yes, you can go ahead.
All right. So we are asking with this Agenda Item, the Board of Commissioners to approve the reallocation of funding within Chairwoman's FY25 budget from contingency to operating, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. And what we're proposing in this Agenda Item is taking the $200,000 that was part of the adopted contingency under the Chairwoman's budget and allocating $100,000 to professional service fees, $75,000 to miscellaneous expenses, $10,000 to travel, $10,000 to general office supplies, and $5,000 to general printing charges.
All right, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
With that, Commissioners, I ask for your support for this item. I shared yesterday that there were some matters that did not move forward during our last fiscal year as the professional service interest just took a long time to execute. Since March of this year, we have been working on that, and those will be presented in the next two Agenda Items. For the other matters, my staff, when there have been expenditures in any of these areas, they have been forwarding that to Commissioners, so you know how those funds have been expended. And just ask for your continuing support. With that, thank you, Commissioner. I'll move for approval of this Agenda Item.
Second, and I do have some commentary for this Agenda Item. So for the contingency moving from this to operating, I do just want to make it clear that this is something available that each Commissioner has utilized primarily towards capital projects, but it has an operating potential. And many of the operating costs that are itemized here are part of the operating cost that would have been itemized prior to the $200,000 being moved here. You know, if we were to go back two years, it was something that another administrator would take care of. But now it's moving under our jurisdiction to determine and be transparent with where those items are being allocated to. But that was originally, like the $10,000 or whatever, that was originally allocated for travel for each of the Commissioners, for some of the conferences, et cetera. So seeing those transfer here, that was a part of this original idea of moving the 200K operating and extending the ability for Commissioners to do a little bit more than capital. That being said, there's still some questions about the professional services components. But in general, the reallocation of the funding, the transfer, is something that I can support.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it. Yes, Commissioner Burrell.
Are you going to go down the line or?
Going by whoever raises their hand.
Thank you. First of all, Madam Chair, last year I did agree to, I gave you the benefit of the doubt and agreed to support this, to move it from contingency to operation with the understanding that all expenditures would come to the, would you would share with the board prior to anything being spent and to follow the procurement process. So we have all used our contingency money in contingency. We have not moved ours. But I wanted to support you with that because I thought, you know, it would come back to us, not for approval, but at least come to us so that we would know what this money was being spent on. And a lot of these events and expenditures, I saw in your newsletter and questioned or asked for the invoicing or cost of the event before the money was spent. And you should have, I was hoping you would come to us directly, as you called me out for not coming to you directly when I asked for this to be shared with the whole board. And I did send an email to the whole board because I was trying to make sure you were accountable to what you agreed to last year. So my concern with this is, with the procurement process being anything over $50,000 has to come to this board for approval, the next two items on the agenda are just under by a dollar, the $50,000, and they won't have to come back to us for approval. And I think that you should be held to the same standards that we are with everything having to come back to the board for approval. And I really wish you would come to us directly if you have policy you want to change or add and let's have our one-on-one communication again. I don't think we need to hire consultants to do policy that you won't when we all have to approve it. Why not just work with us directly? So.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you sharing your comments. I will share that both items that are being considered for professional services are on this agenda for transparency's sake, even though they do not need to be, as you observed, they are under $50,000. But for the desire for it to be public and to come back for Commissioners, they are included on this agenda. So I don't want the public to perceive that that is not the case. Also, with respect to expenditures for events, none of us have to communicate or get approval from each other to have events. And I've asked for my staff, before they've made any expenditure, to share that with you. And I think there was one instance when that did not happen beforehand. And I know that in one of those instances, there were other funds utilized. So even though there were funds spent for the event, the funding did not come from the county, and it was an assumption that it would. I have, unfortunately, I've been onerous on my team who just would like to move forward with tasks that perhaps they could have been able to do without that provision or caveat being in the prior Agenda Item. But it's my goal to be transparent with how these funds are expended. I want to address Commissioner Richardson's point, and then I'll address something else. There are expenditures that we've made as Commissioners that we've never had to be accountable before, that staff took care of it for travel. We didn't have to monitor the expense and see whether or not we were over or under. We didn't have that within our own budget purview. Having a contingency and having it allocated in this manner actually gives a lot more accountability and some transparency to some things that we have not had. But I can't say that's the sole driver for doing this. I've been advocating for this since I've been a Commissioner, and it was actually not a matter that occurred in my district, but occurred in yours. And I shared this before, when there was a safety incident in Commissioner District Three, and you wanted to protect your citizens by getting a consultant to see if we needed a guard safety rail to protect that individual's house because a car careened off the road and actually landed in that person's property not far from a bedroom of where a child was. I could not believe the hoops that you had to go through to try to get support and to end up hearing that the organization would not support you. When I felt as a Commissioner, you should have had the right to be able to move forward, that simple analysis to say what could be done to protect that family. It was that that prompted me to start asking the question and actually started to assess or ask questions about what other local jurisdictions were doing, because there are other Commissioners and other elected officials that do have office budgets. Our offices do not have budgets. The only funds that we have are to hire our administrative assistants or executive assistants. There have been times that I've presented for that to move forward with the board as a Commissioner. It did not move forward. So something that I decided to do was to provide opportunity to give flexibility to Commissioners to address matters that were exigent to them to protect, to serve their constituents. I started off doing this with a contingency budget with respect to capital, not allocating any money for my office, but only to Commissioners, which Commissioners have utilized. But my desire has always been for there to be that flexibility for Commissioners to be able to respond to matters that they saw within their purview of being an elected official by the people. I think Commissioners have utilized it in ways that they can be responsive to needs that they have seen. This is a need that I have seen, which has been different. No Commissioner has been told what to do with those funds. And in fact, this contingency allotment could be utilized by a Commissioner in a way that she may have seen fit, as long as it abides with county policy. Commissioners have moved funding out of contingency. I'm not the only Commissioners to do so. It's just that some Commissioners have moved money out of contingency for different purposes, sometimes to different departments or to different capital projects. But each has had the flexibility to do so and has been supported. I've supported Commissioners in doing that, even though I necessarily would not have chosen to move funds in those ways. That has been their purview. So I'm asking for that same support that I've provided. I've shared with the board, when this was initially presented, my reasons for doing, for doing the allocation for the board and for my office. I'm asking for at least us to try. This is something that has to come back every fiscal year. And so we have the opportunity to see how this works or does not work, and then this can come back before Commissioners. But I'm just asking for support to do something that I had sufficient support to do before that really has not moved forward through the process because we've been abiding by procurement processes.
Can I respond?
Please do, and then we'll go to Commissioner.
Okay. The incident you're referring to was a guard rail that was not warranted by DOT. It wasn't warranted. And when the car that ran off the road came within a foot of hitting a gas line at a house, which would have exploded, not just a child, but the whole family could have been killed, but regardless. And it was something that I felt was necessary, and I did have the support of the board, even though it was not recommended by DOT. So that came out of their budget. I never had, we never had this $200,000 or million in the past to operate with. And then I just, I know all the consultants that we have approved over the last two years out of the budget was approved three to two or four to one, whatever. But the guard rail thing, you're not comparing apples to apples with a DOT project like that. All the contingency money that the other, me and the other Commissioners have all gone to different departments, special projects, and things like that, not for consultants and operating expenses. And all the programs that I started since I've been here, Keep It In Cobb, Superior Pets, for patriotic vets, they've all had sponsors. No county money was expended on any of those committees or programs. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would love to enjoy the support of sponsors, but I remember even having programs and trying to solicit sponsors. And then that's when our County Attorney shared that there could be conflicts that arise with sponsors. So I know it's helpful to get outside sources to help with the things that we have going on. And trust me, it isn't for lack of trying, but, you know, this is again, a way to be transparent about trying to put forward programming and support our community as I've observed opportunity to do so, as again, each Commissioner has. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. It's already been mentioned or has been stated that the funding will be transferred from contingency to operating, and it's not uncommon for us to do that. But when we transfer the funding and we have Agenda Items, for example, if part of the funding is to fill in a sidewalk gap, we are all aware of the intent of those particular funds. The concern that I have, and I'm supportive of the program and events, and on some level, I am also supportive of professional services because that is a line item. But where I do have concern is the next two Agenda Items. While the funding is there for the Commissioner to use at her discretion, the concern that I have regarding the RFP, we're not sure the scope of the work. I don't know if there has been a scope of work for the RFP that's been submitted. I think either I read in here or you shared with me right before the meeting that earlier this year, there were several panels for both communication and this year, there were several panels for both communication and for policy, but there is no RFP attached to the agenda item. So we're getting bits and pieces, although it is at the commissioner's discretion. We don't have the full picture of what we're looking at. Regarding policy, I don't necessarily have an issue with receiving advice regarding policy, but I think that the commissioner should also be a part of that process.
Okay.
Because, you know, the policy initiatives that you may bring forth in your office may not necessarily include or capture the policy desires of other members of the board. So that's where I have an issue with that. But that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Roger Ball will be presenting the next two agenda items, so he can provide a little bit more clarity with respect to that. So I couldn't answer your questions, but I think it may be helpful to have that conversation with him when we get to those two. I thank you for your questions. Commissioner Gammel.
When we're talking about expending taxpayer funds, we have to remember the role of this board. The role of this board is to approve policies to which the county then goes forward and executes. It is then also approving whether we expend taxpayer dollars or not. It's not about using taxpayer dollars to run our offices. We ran to represent the people. I found it interesting, and I agree with Commissioner Sheffield, as far as we each have our own different policies and initiatives. And we've had some conversations, and I've told you, bring it forward in a code amendment, and I'll support you, and stop voting no on the board. So there is communication among some of us, but there is not amongst the leader of this board. So I found it interesting, you know, Commissioner Sheffield brought up the RFP, and while the next two agenda items have not been brought up yet, RFPs were sent out, a committee was put together, but those RFPs were never shared with this board. Yet you claim you want to be transparent. If you really wanted to be transparent, the five of us should have known about that RFP going out before it was sent. So this again goes to support kind of what Commissioner Sheffield says, is we are now expending taxpayer dollars frivolously, because we haven't had the conversation amongst the five of us before moving forward on something that the board does approve, which is policy, which is then the expending of taxpayer dollars. I also have an issue with the professional services, specifically in communications. Just four years ago, when you first came into office, you authorized Chrysalis to do a, I don't know, consultant research, but that was never communicated to myself. Then Chrysalis came out with this report that showed that there was political disparity amongst the board. Yet it's easy to go to politics instead of sitting back and looking at, well, maybe they didn't participate because there was no communication. It's not always politics that divide us. It's the fact that there's no clear communication, there's no understanding. It's easy to hold up your hand and say, no way, stop, I'm not going to listen to you. But it should be just as easy to flip your hand and listen to somebody else's perspective. And so, again, the MDJ and AJC can report that, oh, it's politics that divide this board, but a lot of what divides this board is the fact that we don't sit down and communicate. We don't have the courageous conversations until we get on the Diaz, which then gives the newspaper, the media, everything to then base their image on what Cobb County is. We have a tremendous opportunity going forward to show what a working board looks like. Using a consultant is not the answer.
Thank you. I'd like to push back and say that having a consultant is not a zero-sum game. It's not, it doesn't supersede our relationship. And, you know, communication is a two-way street. And those opportunities are here today, and they will always be, irrespective of how things don't or do move forward with consultants. I want to correct something that you stated. Chrysalis Lab was not authorized by me. They were commissioned by United Way. They were paid for by United Way. The concept of a disparity study was something that United Way had initiated nationally, and there was opportunity for them to have a program here locally. And this, Chrysalis Lab has come up in this room a few times. And again, for anyone that may have understood what that relationship was, there is a United Way of Cobb County that had a, that had an equity initiative, a racial equity initiative that was being implemented across the nation. There was opportunity for them to have one here, and they actually moved forward with the help of Gas South, I believe, and another entity. And then to follow up on that study, because they got overwhelming participation, they decided to commission a disparity study, and they wanted feedback from the board. And I think they tried to meet with everyone on the board, and not everyone would meet with them. So as I shared, it's a two-way street. Sometimes there's opportunity, but there just, there wasn't follow-up with everyone. I can share here, I'm doing my best to be transparent with the board. I would not move these forward if I did not believe that these would be helpful to our county. Again, I've been a policy analyst for the state of Georgia under Governor Perdue. I did see the strength of doing research to be able to advise our organizations and our agencies and our other analysts about our decision-making. I do know that there are other analysts within, within other local jurisdictions that do the same. It is not to supersede the work of any elected body. It is to augment and support, so that we are not wasting the time of our citizens by us having to do that on our own, without that same level of expertise and intentionality. But they have the ability to assess best practices, to see what has worked, what has not worked, and to make recommendations. So that, to me, helps to provide opportunity to make informed decisions. And those decisions will always remain with this board. With communications, again, I'm asking for your support. We do have a great communication staff that serves all of the county. I think there's ability to augment communications with each of our departments still, or our offices still. And I know from the things that have happened over four years, that there could have been better education of our citizens with having greater support for communications. And so, again, we'll have the opportunity to address both of those in the RFP process. There is a process for it, and I'm more than happy to have Roger speak to that during the next two agenda items. Excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner.
Again, I'd like to respond specifically to Chrysalis, because there was no communication. And if you're saying you didn't authorize it, who did? Because there was not a vote of the board to have it done. And again, this is where the problems begin. So if we want to solve the problems, we need to stop this. So, you know, Chrysalis is a prime example that I could use. We could use other ones. As one of the speakers said earlier, the ADUs. That came out of nowhere. I know I wasn't involved in any conversation with it. Yet, what if we had been? I know Commissioner Richardson and I, we've had some courageous conversations on affordable housing, as has Commissioner Sheffield and I. Again, until we start sitting down and using the resources we have between the five of us, you're still going to have the discord, you're not going to be able to change the image to the public. The public is going to still perceive that we are not hearing them and listening to them, because they elected us to represent them, but we are not working together collectively. Because while we represent a district, our vote carries throughout Cobb County. And we impact everybody. So we can sit here and justify and pull whatever we want to say, but the bottom line is, it starts with this board, it ends with this board. And for the record, I have great communications with all the staff. I have no problems reaching out to them. I have no problems with them getting back with me. Four years ago, when we had our first board retreat, we made an agreement on how long it would be for us to return responses, not only to members of the board, but to our staff. That was an informal policy that this board made. It ain't happening. So again, if you want to talk about communications and making it easier for staff, we need to go back and be more responsive in the timeframes that we agreed to, and we essentially promised to them we would hold up to. But we're not. So again, it starts with us, it doesn't start with a consultant.
I absolutely agree with you that it does start with us, Commissioner. With that, commissioners, again, I ask for your support for this agenda item. With that, I don't know if any of you have any additional comments or questions, or else I'll call the question. Thank you. The vote passes 3-2 with Commissioners Brolin and Gamble in opposition. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and County Manager. The Procurement Services Department has two items that we're presenting this morning on behalf of Chairwoman. The first item is to request the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Lexicon Strategies to provide public relations and public affairs services on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $49,999, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Roger, for presenting this. Commissioners, again, when the first agenda item was presented in the past, we spoke about professional services and the need for it to go through the RFP process, and that I worked with procurement to do so. I don't know, you may have been at that meeting, or maybe Bill has, and we spoke about procurement. And I did not, it just absolutely did not occur to me to present the RFP to commissioners. I typically don't see RFPs brought before us for other matters. It was not for not desiring to be transparent about it. But there was a RFP process. I worked with procurement to help draw up that scope for that RFP. I don't know if you have it on hand to be able to share what that scope of work is, but if you do, it might be helpful to walk through that.
I have a scope of service for both, but just one copy.
Okay, yeah. So if Commissioners have any questions with respect to this RFP, I think, or to the RFP process, because as each organization has a RFP process, that does have a selection committee, there were selection committees that were put together for both of them. Do you have any questions with respect to that? Roger would be the best person to answer those questions.
Thank you. So, yeah, with item number 42, that was fine for me. 43 and 44, where I have some still outstanding questions, and the realization of the fact that the RFP exists was certainly something that led me into more questions. And it's less so about presenting the RFP, and more so about knowing the exact scope of work. I think I started to ask some of the questions yesterday around that. But understanding, I mean, I think the sidewalk description is a great one. It's very specific, right? We know exactly what we're trying to get done. And I know when we originally looked at the operating component to this, it was not necessarily supposed to be a way to get staff augmentation, but a way to get studies through, things that are, increase the capacity of certain departments. And so having specificity around, you know, what exactly, for the communications one, because I do hate talking about other agenda items before their time, but, you know, I think we've already started that, so I'll take the liberty there, too. But for communications, knowing the scope of work there, how that corresponds with the Communications Department, and whether or not, I actually have less concern about there being too much conflict, because I'm imagining this as someone who's going to help you reach more people as an office with different correspondents that may need to go out. But I'm also not clear, and I don't want to take that as an assumption, because as I stated yesterday, we're setting the standard for how this moves forward. For the policy piece, I have even more questions around that, because we do have a full staff. We know that they're understaffed in ways when it comes to all of the initiatives, but I would like to see there be an RFP that considers what they're trying to do, and if we're trying to do, like, say, housing, because I know that's something we've all brought up. If there is a housing study, for instance, that maybe, we had a housing study that came out of ComDev, maybe there were some implementation pieces that Jessica Staff could use augmentation for in coordination with this. It's something more specific to help in that capacity, but I just, my lack of clarity is affecting my ability to lend support fully for 43 and 44. So hopefully I articulated that.
Well, I can tell you, there's a scope of service for both, okay? And the scope of service for public relations and the senior policy advisor, it's broad, okay? And it, but it doesn't, I mean, it includes the types of requirements that we would typically put in, a scope of service for senior advisor for policy. I mean, I have the scope of service here, okay? It's two pages. I'll be glad to share it with you, but there's nothing in it. I mean, it's a typical, you know, scope of service for a senior advisor that will, that will provide us with guidance on structuring and crafting policy.
So is it more like, is it staff augmentation for your office? Because it's kind of what it sounds like.
It could be, but they're not housed, they're not housed in my office. They are additional support beyond the two individuals that are working in my office today. I'll just give some examples, and all I can do is give some examples, but let me provide some clarity to what you're asking Roger, and what he just stated. I asked Roger if he can craft this. This is my first time in the procurement process. He pulled together a scope of work that was very broad and generic for these two roles. This is not something we fine-tuned, as it would be fine-tuned with the consultant. And so there were conversations with the consultant about what this would actually look like, given really the small dollar amount that they're being compensated. Because for what someone could fully do within that realm, certainly could far exceed what we're able to pay. So I can share with you that from my discussions with them, which have been really just to assess the top contractor that was selected, was that we would have to craft what this relationship would look like within a way that works with, in their capacity, and with what I'm looking for in the office. So I'll tell you what I'm looking for in the office, because it might not be answered with the scope of work. Again, knowing that it was just a very broad scope of work that Roger's team helped put together. With respect to communications, there's ways that we can be more strategic in our communications and not just communicating out when something occurs.
And who's the "we," just so that?
Even my office. For instance, and we can use the MSPOS as an example of a strategic communication, you know, not knowing how it would go with the public. How would we communicate our position moving into it if it didn't move forward? What would be our concerns that we want to share, or our confidence that we want to share with the public about us still being mindful of their transportation needs and interests? So that we can let them know that even though we ask them to be a part of this very wide county initiative, that we still are mindful of transportation and transportation as it impacts the and transportation as it impacts this county. This is not something that I would ask DOT to do when they're doing day-to-day work of the office. This is not something I would necessarily ask for our communications team to do, which provides, they usually might say, "We have this coming up, this is the information for it." They would not necessarily help in that strategic communication in providing that confidence or that care or concern to the public about them engaging in something so significant that we've asked for all of our staff and our public to put this much time into. How can we best shape our communication around this as we're moving forward? After it occurs, there's still some debriefing. How do we communicate with them what occurred during that session again, so we can continue to discuss that? When it comes to just other events that occur in my office, we have a lot of touchpoints with citizens. There are more things I would love to have on social media than I do. There are ways for us to even have press, more press releases about matters that we're discussing as a county, so that even the media can pick them up and help to get the word out about them. These are not things that I have been able to really galvanize my staff to do, which can help communications move those things forward. Those things could be readily done by having someone who knows what's going on in the office to help us do those things. Those are some ways that I can see immediately in communications being augmented, us being more strategic. So, again, I use the EMSPLOS, the haulers, as another significant example of that. It's like we all felt blindsided by that. We could have talked with the public about why this was even on our radar to begin with. Why we think this is important for the county. Get the public's feedback first, before some of those things occur and people just saw it in a code amendment package. Because our communication for the code amendment packages, these are the code amendments being considered. Read it, come to our public hearings. There are a lot more things that we could be doing to communicate on the front end that could save us a lot of grief on the back end. That it'd be just, I think, by having the input of someone who does that for a living can help us to do better. Not saying that would change the outcome, but at least more people will be educated about it. And we're not always just reacting, which is something that's been very frustrating to me, that we could be having proactive discussions.
So, and this is, this is a question as well, but considering that this is really looking more like staff augmentation, right? Something to help build your capacity, reach more people, hit certain things. What I would like to see, I would like for this to maybe come back after adding some specificity around what that, and I understand that at this point you don't know, but you've just outlined a couple of, some ideas that I think could be supported to say this professional services will come in to help us with specifically proactive communication around the code amendment package, proactive round, helping organize the round tables for affordable housing, like, things that we can actually bite our teeth in and say, "Okay, because it's professional services." And I don't, what I'm concerned about is muddying, using professional services as a way to get another staff person as a, as a go-forward, knowing that a lot of this was around, you know, originally studies and we're looking at short-term projects, short-term, things that you can hold someone by to say, "Did we accomplish X?" And having that specificity, I think, would be good to be consistent with a board policy as well.
Again, we're crafting this, and I could tell you, part of professional services is getting that professional feedback. So, I would hate to be directive, to tell a professional person, "This is exactly what I want." Or else what I would do is just take five thousand here and tell somebody, "Go do this for five thousand dollars." It's kind of a two-way relationship so that they can provide some feedback of their observation of what can help.
I don't think they have to be prohibited from, if they notice something that needs help, but there may, we should go into it with the, "How do we judge your success?" Because it falls under professional services. And that's harder right now to perceive what success would look like. Because that's the point of professional, like, it's not, it's not a staff role, which is more of an ongoing maintenance type thing. Success is, it's more of, "Did you complete the tat, did you, did you fit your job description?" But in this case, I really want to say, "Here was the scope of work, here were some of the outcomes." Not limited to is fine to add in there, but having some clarity around the start and end, I think, would be helpful for, for us, but also for, and the public, but also for staff, county staff.
It would be helpful. I'll share this with you at this point, Commissioner.
We have been going through this process since March of this year. And we have had other, we have said that this process would go through the same process other departments have gone through. Their RFPs are not printed in our book. Which is why, again, it did not dawn on me to print it in this and to provide it to Commissioners. The money that we just approved to be allocated to my office is to my office. When other Commissioners had initiatives, I did not ask for details. When you have your program with respect to Little Brazil, I didn't ask you for the outcome of that. I generally knew what you wanted to do.
There were no dollars expended, though.
Or, the way making sign is, when there were dollars expended to build other projects, I did not go into Commissioners and ask them to know specifically what they wanted to do. I can see if this money was being allocated for the full board, but it's being allocated to each office. You know, so that is the bit of the rub. You know, this was, if this was going to support all Commissioners and if this is something we wanted to do jointly, that would be one thing. But I believe from the team that was part of both of these RFP projects, from depending on our procurement, that they will be able to deliver. And that the same staffer that we've relied on to deliver other services and that we've trusted is the same staff that has been involved with this process. I'll also share that neither one of these had to truly come back before the board. And so, I'm hoping that there is, I'm hoping that what practice or exercise that you're asking for is not to be unduly limiting to a Chair of a county where other Chairs and elected officials have discretion on how they serve their elected officials. I hope that it's not going to undermine my ability to be able to be responsive, just as I've respected that and have not gone into weeds of how other Commissioners have decided to do that. So, if, with your support, to be able to help move this along, to be responsive to the citizens of Cobb, I'll be more than happy to engage you in that. I just am very concerned about it being unduly limiting.
And I'll just respond, I mean, as far as the details, we provide those details in our agenda items, and we work through, anything that you see come forward, we've had conversations with individual departments about those projects and whether or not it's something they can even accommodate, whether or not it's aligned, whether or not they don't, they don't already have something duplicative to that effort. And so, then we bring those forward because they, you're right, it is, it's to respond to a need. But that's just it, it's very concrete. And professional services is meant to be a concrete type of thing as far as a true scope of work. That's what differentiates the professional service from an operational role. And so, I just, I think it's important that if we hold that line, that definition, then that clarity will be useful for all of us. Because I think there are interests for all of us to bring things forward that may require operational capacity. We don't know, right? But I think having that as a guardrail is helpful so that in the future, someone isn't necessarily just trying to use it for general staff augmentation, but for specific achievable things that everyone can say, "Okay, this is good." Again, you can include "not limited to." I don't, I think you're right, that if a consultant comes in and you say, "I need you to work on A, B, and C," and they see D is affecting A, B, and C, they should still be able to say, "Hey, this is the source of the problem," you know, and advise you on that front. But I do think it's good to go into, which is why I say, if the RFP or the scope of work has that, that's great, because then we can see it. But if it does not, then having that, having that additional clarity will be helpful for everyone.
It's in the, Roger can address that, it's in the scope of work.
Roger wanted to respond?
Yes, please let him respond.
Yeah, I mean, the, again, the scope of work was very intentional for both. I mean, we're talking about Senior Advisors that can advise on any level as it relates to organizational policy and public relations. We didn't try to, you know, pigeonhole it. We, we made it broad-based such that when these consultants showed up, these were two senior-level individuals that could respond to any policy issues, any public relations issues.
Did you need?
Those are my questions, thank you.
So, in listening to the conversation, and I do agree with what Commissioner Richardson has said, where I'm having the biggest conflict is I'm hearing that this is supposed to augment and support our communications from Cobb County. While we weren't given the RFP, I find it more interesting that if you look at the selection committee that reviewed the, the RFPs, while one was from the Chairwoman's office, the other two that had voting rights were not Cobb County. So, if it's about helping improve Cobb County's communications, why wouldn't we directly have our communications involved in this process? To be fair, I do note that Ross Cabot was there, but he was non-voting. He had no input to this. And again, this is where budgeting comes in, and we need to listen to the directors. And if Ross says, "Hey, I need more people to help me better communicate or get things out on communications for the county," then the Board and the budgeting process needs to budget that position, not supplement it through a consultant. So, I furthermore have issues based on the conversations and the things that Commissioner Richardson helped come out that further questions the true intent behind this agenda item.
I can share with you, Commissioner, I was a non-voting member on one of these and Ross was, and we do provide input, but we do not provide assessment. We provide technical expertise as to what should be considered. And then we depend on the professional expertise and discretion of those on the committee. The reason why I pulled from outside of the county is because I've seen communications and public relations that were quite strategic and impressive outside of the organization. And I wanted some input with respect to that. In fact, I, and Ross, we went to visit Gwinnett County, I believe, last year or two years ago. They're doing a lot of great things with their communications. Some, we were kind of, you know, we've augmented their staff in communications. We certainly do not have the same heft. But there is opportunity for us to glean from other organizations and to see what they're doing. And again, this is the benefit of having somebody who does policy, who gleans from what others are doing and says, "Cobb, this is how you can benefit" from having a broad look of how things are being done. But there's also consideration for the impact in Cobb, which is why someone from my office was there and my Ross was there. And even with the policy team, there were people from Cobb County. In fact, again, when we get to that item, ACCG was there. So, there's nothing here to undermine Cobb. We are just trying to make sure that Cobb is as, you know, is the best in communications. And we don't always have a big, have the opportunity to measure that if we're just insular about our processes. It takes us actually stepping out and actually comparing and contrasting to see what we're doing, to see how good we are, so that we can make sure that we are providing our best here. Yes, Commissioner Burrell?
Madam Chair, last year, going back to item forty-two, which sets the stage for the rest of this. You amended your motion that you would share with the Board before any money was expended. And you also said you would follow the procurement process. As you have stated, these forty-three and forty-four, these two items, because they're under fifty thousand, by a dollar, they will not have to come back to us. And, and so, with the passage of forty-two, you can hire all the consultants you want under fifty thousand, and it doesn't have to come to the Board for approval. All of our two-hundred thousand and a million, this has nothing to do with purchasing, but I'm just making a statement here. All of ours are on, some are on consent. I have one on regular for the Veterans Memorial, because that's a SPOS project. So, it has to be regular. But we all have other items from our two-hundred thousand or our million.
Commissioner Sheffield has the ComDouglas Public Health.
They're all on consent, okay? So, they are all approved by this Board. But with this, it doesn't have to be. Because you are following the procurement process with, under the fifty thousand. So, all this discussion is good, but it's a moot point.
It's not a moot point. Commissioner, that's why they're on the agenda. They are coming back to you, they're coming back to you today and right now. And they're up to fifty thousand, so you know there's no, there's no other dollars for anything other than what you see. There's, there's no intent to bring back a third and a fourth and a fifth. I moved that agenda item before, I think we talked about it at the last time, that there would be about fifty thousand for each. That's what we're bringing forward today. In the professional services that provide, it says for communications, one, and research for the other, which is two. That's what's before you, Commissioner. There's no intent, there's no ability to provide anything else. I don't know how to, I don't know how to make that point more clear.
Okay. Items forty-two and forty-three, well, I'll go back to, okay. Item forty-two, to transfer it from contingency to operating, I was supportive of that agenda item. As I mentioned in my earlier comments, I still have issues with supporting items forty-three and forty-four. It's been mentioned that the procurement process with staff, staff is not required to bring any items before us if it's less than fifty thousand dollars. And the same would have been true here. I'm not sure why it's in the agenda book, but, and I don't know if Chair, if you intended to include it in the agenda. But had it not been, then we would not have had the opportunity to have this conversation. While I understand that the office of the Chairwoman may require additional help with communication, with policy, et cetera, if getting the word out on initiatives such as the EMSPLOS or being proactive, then perhaps there's an opportunity for us to increase the staff at Communications so that the entire Board and the county will benefit from having that additional person. And it wouldn't be a benefit just solely from, from the Chair's office. As I mentioned earlier, as well, with policy, my concern is, again, that the policy desires of this Board may not necessarily be captured with some of the conversations with the consultants. There is some policy that we agree on, that we would like to address, housing, transportation, et cetera. But there may be some others that may be brought forth that we may not know about. And my concern is that... there may be, there may be some sort of workaround, possibly, to get those items through. So, I, I think that with forty-two and forty-three, I think we should probably table it for further discussion and have conversations with the commissioners. It sounds like everyone here would be interested in having conversations. I heard communication come up several times regarding the board. I think this would be a great way for us to, to reestablish, trust came up in the past, last year when we had this agenda item. I, I think it would be a good opportunity for us to really dial in on what your intent, what your intentions are with this. And Roger, thank you for being prepared to discuss it, but I, I don't necessarily want to have that discussion now. I would like to have had it before today to process and have follow-up questions and conversations with either you or the chair. But I, I think that we should probably table this for further conversation and figure out how we can get all the parts to work, whether it's with communications, with the commissioners as it relates to policy. But as it stands, I'm not supportive of these two items.
Thank you. What I will do, Commissioners, is I do have the ability to pull it. And as you shared, neither of these had to come back today. They came back for transparency's sake, to, to have the discussion, which we can have. I have been available for commissioners. If you would like to resume the meetings that we had one-on-one, we can do that. It has not been for not trying. It has not been for not, for not trying on my part. So, I'm more than happy to resume that. I just am hoping that there'll be some follow-up for commissioners to do that. And what you're seeing here on the dais is truly acted upon. I can share with you that both of these matters have already gone through legal. These are RFP processes that procurement typically follows. They typically go through a team, and then they go through the legal process. And so, they have been ready to move forward. They have been brought back to you and to the public for sake of transparency. And I don't know how we'll move forward from there, but the conversations can certainly happen. The conversations with whoever's on each team could certainly happen with all of you, if that's what you would like. I'm grateful for your support to be able to help me in moving the contingency to operating. And I'm so grateful to support the things that you have decided to do to support your districts. And I'm hoping that over time, that we will see that this is positive for the county. But I will ask for procurement to pull, to pull these two matters from the agenda. And we will discuss a path forward and how they'll move forward, because they've already gone through the procurement process to move forward. Again, this was a courtesy that was being provided for sake of transparency, not necessarily for your control, just as I haven't controlled. And I really think that that's what's being asked, is for a level of control with respect to it, and a lack of trust. And there's a certain amount of trust that I have for each commissioner with respect to how they've done things. And I would like to see that reciprocated. And I think the only way to really show it is to have this go through and for you to see that it's not, there are a lot of things that could be presumed about what this is, but I think it's not going to be clear what it is until it actually has the ability to move forward. And I'm more than happy to work with you in how that does move, move forward. So, Roger, you can go, we can go ahead and we can pull for discussion both agenda items forty-two and forty-three. They were, excuse me, forty-three and forty-four.
But just, just one other thing, because it's been mentioned several times that those items are on the agenda for transparency, because it's less than fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, moving forward, I don't know what guardrails or what assurances we have that this may not come back, it just won't be on the agenda.
That can happen.
Because it's forty-nine thousand dollars. So, while the staff, while the staff does not necessarily have to bring it forth, and that's, you know, that's the policy, you know, I think as the board, regardless of what the amount is, I think we should share it with one another.
I absolutely agree.
If it's, if it's less than forty-nine thousand dollars, then I think it should come back before the board.
It can, but it's not required for the approval process. But I'm more than happy to share with the board, again, what's going on. It, it's, see, it's one thing to educate, and it's another thing, I think, for there to be an element of control with respect to the work that's, the work that I'm doing to be responsive, as many of you have had the ability to do. We are just choosing to do it in different ways. But certainly, I'll have talked to Roger. Roger's reached out to you, you can reach back out to him. I'm sure he'll be more than happy to talk to you about it. I'm sure with other commissioners, I'll encourage Roger to reach out to you. I'll encourage each consultant who was selected by the RFP, I'll encourage them to reach out to you. There will be no limited communications with respect to it. If you have concerns with respect to how you'll be engaged in policy, you can have the ability to have that conversation, if that truly is the concern. All of those things could happen, whether or not these two matters move forward or not. And I think that will be the test, if this is truly, and if this is truly a sincere interest.
Why wouldn't it be?
I don't. Commissioner, you know, there's been some things stated up here that I'm not going to, I'm not trying to put anybody out there, for one thing, tis the season. But it has not been for lack of trying with respect to communicating a number of issues, of which there have not been returned phone calls, of which there have not been meetings, of which people have shared, because of home rule, I don't want to sit down and talk to you about things. So, to hear that now there's not discussion happening, when there's been many opportunities to do so, that's, you know, it's, it's interesting to hear it now on the dais, but when there've been opportunities to have discussion about things, it hasn't been there. So, we can still have those discussions. I'm more than willing to meet each commissioner where she said she was today. If you want to have more conversations, if you want to see the RFP, if you want to be involved with the process and speaking with the policy advisors, you can do so.
I see. So, Bill, I'm gonna go back, because, you know, while we're going to hold items forty-two and forty-three.
Forty-three and forty-four.
Forty-three and forty-four. While we're willing to hold that for further conversation, it's been stated, if it's under forty-nine or under fifty thousand dollars, it does not have to come to the board. And I'm just concerned that there may be, there may be an effort, maybe not for the same consultant, but I'm, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are all being transparent with how we are utilizing the funds, although it's within our discretion. So, my question is, since, you know, funding can be spent for under fifty thousand dollars, and that's not going to change today, that's not going to change today, I would like to rescind my vote for the previous agenda item. So, my question is, do we need to vote on forty-three and forty-four and then go back and rescind?
Forty-three has an outstanding motion. We have to complete the motion for forty-three, and then we can rescind forty-two. I did put a motion for forty-three. Do you have a, do you have a motion, Pam? Oh, okay, I thought before we had discussion.
With, with no motion, then you can, you can actually reconsider the vote during the same meeting.
We'll reconsider the vote for forty-two.
Okay.
Does another motion have to be made?
Well, I think we need to get through. I think we need to get through forty-three first.
No, forty-three, there's no motion. Forty-three and forty-four rescinded.
Well, there's been discussion on it, so I don't know if we should complete that, since we've had discussion.
As long as there's no motion, then it's not presented to the board.
All right.
All right.
We'll go ahead, and I'll move to rescind the vote for forty, for forty-two. Second. Is there any discussion?
Reconsider the vote.
To reconsider.
Okay, you said rescind.
To reconsider, and that means it comes back in another motion to approve or not, or deny?
I'll move to reconsider the vote for forty-two. There's no second?
I did second.
Okay. All right, well, can we reconsider the vote for agenda item forty-two? Commissioner?
Pardon?
Commissioners, I vote that we reconsider the vote, we reconsidered the vote for forty-two.
Then there'd be a motion that would need to be made, either to approve or to deny forty-two.
Commissioners, I'm asking for your votes to still support agenda item forty-two.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. The vote does not carry three-two. I do have a question with respect to legal and to procurement with respect to both RFPs that have gone out and have already been negotiated with legal.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know the path forward.
Well, at this current stage, right now, I mean, there's not a formal contract until there actually is approval by the board.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. I just want to discuss that last agenda item, Commissioners, again. I have been very supportive of all that Commissioners have decided to do with their funding. And I'm hoping that the conversations, again, that were before us are still conversations that we're sincere in moving forward together as a board. Because I know that there are a lot of initiatives that could not have gone forward unless I did put those funds in our budget for your consideration.
Now, just share one comment, the item number forty-two, and that was before, was last year. There weren't line items, and I had made the recommendation for it to come back again with some line items, and I came back and supported it. And so I hope that that's a testament to, when I'm, when I'm making a specific recommendation, that is something I'm specifically looking for.
Commissioner, yes, you, you're probably the only one that has provided that feedback.
And I'll just also add, Chair, it's not that we're not, or I'll speak for myself, supportive of it. I'm just asking for additional conversation, like we do with any other agenda item.
Okay, like I said, I know that myself and Roger have reached out to you. It would be helpful to have your, it would be helpful to have the support of Commissioners when I reach out to you to talk through business matters of the county to get a response.
I'm sorry, when did you reach out to me?
Commissioner, I called you last weekend, I believe, with respect to this matter.
And we talked?
Okay.
We did.
And, and Roger has also followed up with you with respect to it when there were additional concerns yesterday.
Okay, I'm sorry, Roger, did you leave a voicemail message or phone message for me? How did you communicate? Oh, you sent an email?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have not obviously read your email.
My office was outside your office yesterday when you expressed your concerns. Desiring to meet, you left and didn't, and didn't follow up with my office.
Right, but, you know, I, I guess the concern is, you know, yesterday is the day before the hearing. What I'm asking simply is that we have conversation around it before, the day before the meeting. You and I talked, you reached out to me to ask if I was in support of the agenda item for the transfer and to the, the operating fund, and I shared with you that I was. But we did not have a conversation about the other two agenda items. So that would have been a great opportunity for us to have a discussion about that a week or so ago before today's hearing.
Okay, again, Commissioner, these are falling in line with what were discussed prior. It's gone through the same RFP process that was discussed at the last meeting. I'm more than happy to have a conversation with you, and that's why when I heard your additional concerns, our staff was present. I only know concerns when Commissioners share them, which is why when we have an open agenda session, there often is follow-up after our agenda meetings. And again, it was not for lack of trying to follow up on additional concerns that, that you shared.
Right, but unfortunately, the timing yesterday, I had other appointments and meetings, and I just didn't have an opportunity to connect just hours before the hearing.
No, I don't disagree with.
Okay, all right, just want to make clear. I just don't want to put it out there that you tried to reach me and, you know, it's this constant communication attempt, and I just simply did not respond.
Commissioner Sheffield, I love you as a person, I have a lot of respect for you. It's just that there was no response back, again, after you telling someone you would return. And you didn't return, nor did you return their call, nor did you let someone know. So, again, Commissioner, it's not, it's not for lack of, it's, it's not for lack of trying. Again, I've had meetings, open meetings with all Commissioners. We've tried to reach out to all Commissioners. We've heard different reasons as to why Commissioners cannot or choose not to. We would love for that opportunity to be followed up after this meeting, because there are a lot of things, as Commissioner Gamble has shared, that we should be discussing. This should not have played out here today, and it did not have to. And it's not for lack of trying. Commissioner Burrow.
When you first took office as Chair, we had a great conversation for an hour and a half, the very first meeting. And we had our one-on-ones on a monthly basis. And then, like you said just a minute ago, when all the home rules stuff started and the dissension on this board, everything stopped. And I, and I'm not saying I wasn't to blame for that, because I did stop the one-on-ones at that time. You are correct, okay? But it's time to, even though the home rule still isn't settled, it's time to resume those and share with each other our concerns or our agenda items. I was not called on this agenda item, and I know you're gonna say, because you knew I wouldn't support it. But last year, when I sent out an email to, when I saw your different events, the state of the county or, or any of the events, the International Festival in your newsletter, that sent off a trigger in my mind that you were gonna share these expenses with us before the money was allocated, okay? So that's why I sent an email to the whole board, because the agenda item, the minutes that were passed last year on this forty-two to transfer the money, said that you would share with the board, the board, not just me or, or other, or each individual Commissioner, the board. And that's why I emailed the board to ask for, we shouldn't have to ask for these requests. You should be giving those to us before the money's spent. That's all I was asking. But you resorted to calling me a name and then tried to call me, and I had people in my office, and I didn't respond to your phone call. And I know that's what you're referring to by reaching out. So, I'm just saying, I would like to resume those one-on-one meetings if they're gonna be beneficial, and if you're willing, if we're both willing to listen.
I love, I love this, and I would love to, Commissioner Burrow. Just because I have an event or a program doesn't mean that funds have been expended. And we were being pressed for something that we did not do yet. And so it was very difficult at the time, because you're pressuring me, then I have to go ask staff. And it was a lot going. And we were being pressed for something that we did not do yet, and so it was very difficult at the time, because you're pressuring me, then I have to go ask staff, and there was a lot going on. They know the pressure, they know our backs are against the wall, they know this is a new thing with respect to this, and they are doing their very best to provide all of that documentation to you. And so that was the issue with that.
But some of the things, we're getting the day of, and it's too late, you have to pay them.
Exactly, because that's sometimes when they find out about it, or if they may have moved something forward, and I'll remind them, or they may have forgotten if they were busy, but they are doing their very, our office is doing our very best, Commissioner. But I appreciate it, I look forward to meeting with you, I'm hoping I have the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Sheffield, with Commissioner Gamble, it's been a different story from day one, but certainly, we know that we've got to, we've got, we've got to, you know, we have to communicate if we want to be able to move things forward. It just has been, it was a contentious initial meeting, and hopefully, they won't be moving forward, but, you know, if there's a desire to communicate and talk through policy, I'm hoping that, that we can do so. I'm hoping that what, again, is being talked about here will be reflected in sincere effort following this meeting.
One cob.
One cob.
That was our mantra.
One cob, and since the door has been opened, I will publicly share about our first meeting, that maybe lasted about three minutes. You told me I wasn't needed on the board.
Oh, my.
I then went and grabbed the Deputy County Manager, or Jimmy Geese at that time, and asked him to come in and sit with me in this meeting. Because I too was shocked that you had just said that. Now, over the past four years of your leadership, the audience has noted how you tend to ignore me, don't call on me. Commissioner Richardson is often saying, hey, Commissioner Gamble, Sue, there's other things that you do that have supported that. And even yesterday, when we were in work session, you called on Commissioner Burrell to respond, you called on Commissioner Sheffield, you called on Commissioner Richardson. You never called on me. Instead, you said, well, is there anyone else that wants to respond? Now, while those are insignificant and small, it goes to the lack of respect. We were all elected to sit here, we are all elected to serve. We are all eligible to have differences of opinion, and to sit here and deflect to home rule as to why you can't talk to board members that don't see the same as you do? That's an excuse. We should be able to disagree on something and say, okay, you see it this way, I see it this way, and we move on to the next issue. We cannot get stuck on the fact that, oh, my gosh, we disagree on this, so that means we can't agree on anything else. That is just complete dysfunction.
I absolutely agree, and I hate to have this played out publicly, but sometimes you have to go through to get through, that's been my mantra in life. I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead, I thought you were concluding, go ahead. It is my mantra, sometimes you have to go through to get through, and so sometimes we have the ugly things that occur, because sometimes you have to go through it to get to the other side of it. And home rule was contentious, I wish that wasn't a reason shared as to why I couldn't meet, but it has been contentious for our board. Commissioner Gamble, I have, I appreciate you being on the Board of Commissioners, and I have never told you, I don't know where this assertion comes from, I have never told you, ever, ever told you that you should not be on this board. Commissioner Gamble, when you joined our board several years ago, I used to have your back even when nobody else did. So I don't know why you think that that would start because I became Chair, that I would ever tell you something like that. I think it's unfortunate that you would not be honest about that communication, but that's unfair to me, and it's unfair for our relationship. And it disintegrated very quickly, it's something that you and I can talk about offline, since you are willing to speak. But Commissioner Gamble, you know, you and I are very different, but you and I are alike in a lot of ways. Because when we observe that things are not right and we feel convicted by it, we'll speak even if we have to stand alone. Which is, again, even though when you first came in and you had to stand alone, I knew what it was like to stand alone, and I would support you, even when I didn't always agree with you, until some very significant thing started to happen from you towards me, and I started to see some things for what they were. But I would not have offered to meet with you if I didn't intend to work with you. We all have valuable places on this board, but I, I don't know what, why you would perceive that I would ever share anything like that towards you, but I have never shared anything, never said anything like that about you, ever, ever, and nor would I, that's not even in my nature to do it, and that's not how I feel. Commissioners, thank you, I look forward to communicating with all of you with respect to these Agenda Items, and I'm hoping that this, again, sometimes you got to get through to get to, and we've, you know, they say the holidays sometimes brings out these type of conversations, and this is, you know, tis the season, but I look forward to us having a better season where we can have communication with respect to all policy matters. Thank you, Roger.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break and come back? Thank you.
This will be the least controversial. Hopefully, hopefully.
All right, thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now at our ARPA tab, and we have one item that will be presented by our Finance Director.
Morning Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item, and it is we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize the reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $309,000 to the Cobb County Water System to support stormwater management projects. To authorize the reallocation of any additional de-obligation funds that become available prior to December 31st, 2024, to these projects, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioners, for the purpose of discussion, I'll move that we approve this agenda item.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? I'll share again. I just perceive that there are other exigent matters to address with any remaining ARPA funds. I can't support this, even though I do know that this is a significant need. With that, I'll call the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go on to the water system.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. The Water System recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve our proposed schedule of rates, charges, and fees that includes about a 2.5% increase in water rates and a 3.5% increase in wastewater rates to become effective April 1st, 2025, and annual 3.5% increases in both water and wastewater commodity charges and the wholesale government wastewater rate for 2026 through 2029 to be effective January 1st of each year. These increases are needed due to increases in operating costs, such as our wholesale costs for water, and due to increasing construction costs with several large wastewater treatment projects planned over the next six years.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrell.
Yes. While I understand the Cobb Marietta Water Authority is increasing their rates on us, I cannot support this as long as the water transfer is still being done.
Understandable. Are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner Gamble, please.
Judy, could you just explain, because people are asking why we're doing a five-year, I think we did five, right, why we're doing a five-year, and I've been explaining to them that correlates with the five-year rate increase that we've had with the Marietta Water Authority. So could you just explain that a little bit for public information?
Sure. So one thing is, when we look at our cost of services, our rates, and we're also looking at the projects we have planned, we try to look at least five years out, usually even more. Our financial plan goes out many years. So having a planned rate increase helps us plan for the future better. It helps us, our customers, plan better. But most importantly, our wholesale customers, so we provide wholesale wastewater service to Marietta, Smyrna, Ostel, and some other surrounding counties. And when we raise our rates, they usually have to raise their rates, just like when the Water Authority raises their rates, we have to raise our rates. So having a five-year plan helps our wholesale customers plan as well.
Okay, but for further clarity, again, part of the increases we're showing here is because Marietta has increased the rates to Cobb County.
The Water Authority, yes.
The Water Authority, yes. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sheffield.
I just wanted to go back to the water transfer and the reduction. I know that we've reduced it over the years. Can you share the schedule of reduction? I think we started at six, maybe, when I started, and we reduced it each year by 1%.
I can tell you.
Go ahead, Judy.
It was at 10%, and it's been reduced 1% each year. So currently, we're at 5%.
Okay.
And so it will be up to the Board with each budget cycle to decide whether or not to continue that 1% reduction until it's eliminated.
And we've been consistently reducing it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Not entirely.
Not entirely. But I can share the schedule with you. But it was on a plan, a five-year plan, to reduce it incrementally from 10% to 5%. And in 2016, when we rolled back the millage to match the increase in the digest, it went back up to 10% with the 2017 budget. And then the next year, we started reducing it again in 2018, and it went down 3%. And then it was supposed to go back down 1% each year. When Chairman Boyce was here, we started it again in his budget. And then when Commissioner, well, Chairwoman Cupid took over in 2021, it was at 8%. And we kept it at 8% one year, and each year since then, we have reduced it by 1%. So for the 25 budget, it went from 6% to 5%. But it has, it can go, the maximum it can be is 10.
Right.
So we are incrementally reducing it.
Right, and that's the point that I wanted to make, that we are, even though the general public may see an increase here, which is being kind of handed down from the Marietta Water Authority, we are making an effort as a board to decrease that.
Right. But when the water transfer was 10%, we absorbed a lot of the Cobb Marietta Water Authority increases. Because I remember when Steve McCullers was here, before we started the increases, we were absorbing a lot of that, we were absorbing a lot of their five-year, for five years. We were absorbing a lot of that and not passing it on to the residents. But now with the water transfer being reduced, you know, we're still, we're still getting those increases.
Yes. So in the past, we were able to absorb some of those rate increases because we had reserves, and we burned down those reserves. So we don't have the reserves that we had at one time.
So I appreciate the budget, you know, staying on track to reduce it 1% a year. But until it's gone completely, I have to be consistent.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. And just for clarity, once we get down to that 2% to 1%, there are some other legal components to that reduction as well for the water transfer. I remember you were saying that's tied up into some of the city contracts, and so it gets more complicated as we get lower and lower, correct?
The complication with that is trying to use that reduction for stormwater.
Understood. Okay, understood. That's where it gets complicated. Because those are tied up in how, they're actually paying us for those services. So, okay, thank you.
This is one of the most proactive measures I've seen us take with respect to water. A lot of times, it's very difficult to make these decisions, and we end up having to do a significant increase because we keep delaying it. So at least putting it out there publicly helps us to prorate the impact to our citizens. And I hope that there will be majority support for this agenda item. So with that, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Burrell in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Transportation.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager, Drew Wrestler, DOT. We have nine items for your consideration on the regular tab this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,243,725 for Cumberland Parkway, Cumberland Boulevard Transit, Americans with Disabilities Act Sidewalk Improvements, Project Number B 2751. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item similarly is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $371,825 for Busby Drive, Busby Parkway Transit ADA Sidewalk Improvements, Project Number B 2752. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with NGT Group LLC in an amount not to exceed $617,834.46 for Veterans Memorial Highway at Buckner Road Traffic Signal, Project Number B 2575. Authorize a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
About time. Just two words, about time. Thank you.
Understood.
Save lives.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The vote carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for East-West Connector Corridor Improvement Scoping Study, Project Number AR 19, and authorize negotiations for scope of services and fees beginning with the top-ranked firm, HNTB Corporation.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number AR 20 Task Order Number Three to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with RS&amp;H Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $498,289.66 for completion of Cumberland Transfer Center Site Selection Study. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This one is going to be fine.
Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change orders final to contracts for various completed projects in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2022 SPOS TIP Fund, and Water System Fund. A total net savings to the projects in the amount of $516,985.2. Authorize a corresponding budget and accounting transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Federal EC LLC in an amount not to exceed $93,127.45 for drainage system repairs on Terrell Mill Road, Project Number B 22153. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Barto Paving Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,171,913.93 for Old Stylesborough Road at County Line Road, Project Number B 2301. Authorize a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. Thank you. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank grant application to the State Road and Tollway Authority to assist with construction of Bells Ferry Road over Noonday Creek, Project Number B 2101. Authorize payment of a grant application fee to the State Road and Tollway Authority in the amount of $250, and further authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Drew, is this the bridge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at our Public Services tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. We have six items for consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners to authorize the allocation and transfer of approved FY 2025 District III contingency funding to the 2022 SPOS Program in support of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Project. In this item, Commissioner Burrell has asked for $500,000 to be allocated to the Cobb Veterans Memorial Project. We ask the Board of Commissioners authorize the allocation and transfer of approved FY 2025 District III contingency funding in the amount of $500,000 to the 2022 SPOS Program in support of the Cobb Veterans Memorial. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, with pleasure, a motion to approve, but just wanted to state that because this is a SPOS project, it's on regular rather than the other ones that were on concept.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Our second item is to approve a contract with Capital Sports Construction Incorporated for construction services for the conversion of athletic fields to synthetic turf fields at Wallace and Lost Mountain Parks under the 2022 Park SPOS Program. This project will improve safety, playability, and help in decreasing maintenance costs at several fields inside Cobb County. We ask the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Capital Sports Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,469,000 for construction services for conversion of these fields to synthetic turf at Wallace and Lost Mountain Parks under the 2022 Park SPOS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Our next item is to approve a purchase agreement with Superior Recreational Products to furnish and install shade structures at East Cobb Park, Terrell Mill Park Tennis Center, and Boot Ward Recreation Center under the 2022 Park SPOS Program. This project is for shade improvements to the main playground at East Cobb Park, shading for players and spectators at Terrell Mill Tennis Center, and shade for our day camp at Boot Ward Recreation Center. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a purchase agreement for Superior Recreational Products in an amount not to exceed $65,214.4 for the installation of shade structures at East Cobb, Terrell Mill Park, and Boot Ward Recreation Center. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Our next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with CBA Sports for the replacement of wood gymnasium floors at South Cobb Recreation Center, Fair Oaks Recreation Center, and Rhonda Anderson Recreation Center under the 2022 Park SPOS Program. This change order represents a reduction in the contract of $10,956. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with CBA Sports. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Our next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a purchase agreement with Ready Fitness Incorporated to furnish and install new cardio and fitness equipment for the Osborne Area Recreation Community Center, recently renamed the Milford Recreation Center under the 2016 Park SPOS Program. The recreation center requires furnishings, and these include cardio and fitness equipment for patrons to utilize. We ask the Board of Commissioners approve a purchase agreement for Ready Fitness Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $72,122.49 for the furnishing and installation of new cardio fitness equipment for Milford Recreation Center under the 2016 Park SPOS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute any necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Are we still on par to open? I think it was in March?
Late March, early April, we're still on par. We're getting down to the, real close. We'll have a little bit better updated schedule probably after the first of the year, but we're still on par as of right now.
Okay, perfect. And that includes the track, the indoor track?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any additional discussion? Call the question.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Leatherwood Incorporated for the restoration of the Power Jackson Cabin at Hyde Farm under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. The Power Jackson Cabin is one of the oldest, if not oldest, structures in Cobb County. The restoration of this structure at Hyde Farm is one of the three known remaining Power family cabins, including the Hyde Historic House, the Winifred and George Power Cabin, and now the Power Jackson Cabin, which will all be located on or adjacent to Hyde Farm. We ask the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Leatherwood Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $354,000 for the restoration of the Power Jackson Cabin at Hyde Farm under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
So moved. Second. And just, great job in all the work that has been done to move this structure. I know it's been an intricate.
A lot of that work has been done also with the partnership of Cobb Landmarks. So they've been very instrumental in that as well. So we appreciate Cobb Landmarks helping us out with that and raising the money.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Burrell.
And with all the history at Hyde Farm, will this now be operational, or do we still have more to do?
We still have more to do. There's always things to do. One of the things that we are, I don't want to give away a lot of the, sort of, the secrets, but, you know, one of the things that we're looking at right now is to possibly open up our first, what we would call a nature center at Hyde Farm and the new Welcome Center, or the old Welcome Center that's sort of been available for parties here and there, and we've done some classes. But we're looking at getting into more of the nature and the educational, the outdoor educational piece, and having a place that we can sort of call home for that. So we're looking at that. But one of the things with the Power Jackson Cabin is to have an area where you can walk around the pond and be, you know, in front of the Powers Jackson Cabin, and then go up to the Hyde House, and have it just sort of be a walking tour of that history.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? We'll call the question. The vote carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at our Support Services tab, and ITS is up first.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and Deputy County Manager. Continuing on with the parks theme, our first item this morning is a joint item with parks to request your approval to purchase outdoor wireless and networking materials from Prosys Systems, Inc., to implement the ARPA-funded Cobb County broadband Wi-Fi enhancement and expansion program at Harrison Lost Mountain and Oregon Parks under provisions of a State of Georgia Department of Administrative Services/CISCO contract and an Omnia Partners contract in a total amount not to exceed $140,167. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the procurement director to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our second item is also a joint item with parks to request your approval to purchase the cabling, power, and installation services from Net Planner Systems Incorporated to implement the ARPA-funded Cobb County broadband Wi-Fi enhancement and expansion program at Harrison Lost Mountain and Oregon Parks. Under provisions of a Georgia Technology Authority contract in an amount not to exceed $243,077.80, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the procurement director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion, excuse me, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at our second, oh no, we do have one from Property Management. Sorry, Andrew.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and Deputy County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Laz Parking, Georgia LLC. with Laz Parking, Georgia LLC for management and operation of the parking decks located at 115 Waddell Street and 191 Lawrence Street, Marietta, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Andrew. We are now at our second public comment.
There's no one that signed up for it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. With that, Commissioners, we're at our appointments tab, but we do have a motion to add a non-agenda item, which is with respect to approving a reappointment of one of our Board of Ethics members. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the addition of the agenda item to reappoint Leilande Plendel to the Board of Ethics to the end of our appointments tab.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. And with that, Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Gambrell.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Peggy Holbrook to the Public Library Board.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. We can go to our next agenda item. Commissioner Gambrell, I believe you have an announcement.
Yes, I'd like to announce the reappointment of CB Fair to the Airport Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, and no vote is needed for that. And Commissioners, I move that we appoint Leilande Plendel to the Board of Ethics.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Commissioners, and we are now at the Commissioners' Public Address.
This is Sharon Stanley and Chief Johnson. They're out there. Helen was here. She's already helping, but those three directors. Of course. Um, Chief Johnson and Robin Bishop are serious. I'm sorry.
You may begin whenever you're ready, Commissioner.
Santa is coming to the library. You can enjoy a complimentary hot cocoa and bring pre-packed holiday cookies to share. Listen to live holiday music. Festivities start at 2:00 p.m. All ages are welcome. No registration is required. And again, this is at the North Cobb Library on Saturday, December 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And lastly, in our home, we say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, but I wish all of you a joyful holiday celebration, no matter how it is said. Have a wonderful and prosperous 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. From the office, definitely want to wish everyone, I usually say happy all the holidays because there's so many, but certainly Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as well for our household. Wishing you and your family a happy holiday season. I hope you take the time to find joy, peace, and rest. Thank you for a great year, and I look forward to all we'll accomplish together in 2025. Capstone Showcase, so you all have heard about the capstones every so often, every year. Their showcase is coming up for the community. You can see what they've been working on. The Fall Interns have worked extremely hard on nine exciting community projects. The projects selected for this year were Bridge to Success, the Master Planning and Affordable Housing, Taxpayers Receipt, Renters Bill of Rights, Water Quality Technologies, Little Brazil Community Center, Arch Triangle, and the Esports Conference. So you can learn what these students were up to and how far they got with each of those. So that will take place December 16th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Soul Mill Library and Cultural Center. And the Community Huddles, you can rejoin. We have started those back up, so join the biweekly District Two Community Huddles for an opportunity to talk about whatever's on your mind and also network with others from around the District Two community as well. It's a regular biweekly meeting held via Zoom, and the next one will be this, on Thursday, December 19th at 7:00 p.m. And then from the community, freezing cold temperatures are expected. Temperatures are expected to plummet later this week. Mus Ministries normally opens warming shelters when overnight low temperatures are expected to fall below 35 degrees. The Hope House Shelter is located at 1297 Bells Ferry Road, Marietta, so certainly help get the word out that that is an option. That concludes all of my announcements.
All righty, thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to Commissioner Burrow.
Happy birthday to the National Guard. December 13th marks the National Guard's 388th birthday. Although this day is not recognized as a national holiday, this day is as important as any other commemorative day. The National Guard was established in 1636 and is the oldest military organization in America. The National Guard primarily, is primarily composed of citizen soldiers who hold down full-time civilian jobs, attend school, and are business owners. The mission of the National Guard is to serve both community and country and to provide defense for the nation. They have been known to respond with speed, strength, and efficiency to help defend American freedom and ideals. Join the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation at the National Reef Across America Day noon on Saturday, December 14th at the Marietta National Cemetery, 500 Washington Avenue. The ceremony will begin at noon, followed by the placement of the wreath. You can help remember, honor, and teach by volunteering and inviting friends to join the laying of the wreaths on the veterans' graves to honor them and say thank you for your service. If you are interested in sponsoring a wreath or donating, you can go to wreathsacrossamerica.org or click on the QR code with the flyers in the back. Congratulations to our retirees leaving us. Our Fire Chief, Bill Johnson, I think he's still here, yep. Our Library Services Director, Helen Poyer, and our Support Services Agency Director, Sharon Stanley, on their retirement. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service to Cobb County and the citizens and us, and may you enjoy every moment of this exciting new journey and find happiness in whatever comes next. I don't know how we're going to make it without you. And last but not least, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and Happy and Prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. District Four news and updates. Be part of shaping Mableton's future by joining the public meeting for the Mableton 2045 Comprehensive Plan tonight, Tuesday, December 10th at 6:30 at the South Cobb Lions Club located at 620 Lions Club Drive in Mableton. This inaugural plan will act as the city's roadmap for the next 20 years, establishing policies and goals to guide Mableton's economic, social, physical, environmental, and fiscal development. Come learn about the planning process and share your ideas to help shape Mableton's future. This weekend will spread holiday cheer in District Four. Join me this Saturday, December 14th at 10:00 a.m. for my inaugural must-have holiday cheer drive at the South Cobb Recreation Center located at 875 Riverside Parkway. I am partnered with Mus Ministries, and we will distribute food boxes to help support families in South Cobb. On the southwest side of my district, the 10th Annual Giving Hope for the Holidays event will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Ron Anderson Rec. Center at 3820 Macedonia Road in Powder Springs, providing holiday assistance to families. Parents must register to participate in Giving Hope for the Holidays. For details or to register, contact Deborah Dockland at 678-522-1314. Let's make the season brighter in our community. As we, as we approach the holiday season, I want to take a moment to wish everyone a joyful and peaceful holiday and a very happy new year. Please note the county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th in observance of the Christmas holiday, as well as Wednesday, January 1st for New Year's Day. I hope this time brings happiness, relaxation, and cherished moments with loved ones. Thank you so much for being part of our community, and I look forward to a bright year ahead in 2025. And finally, my last slide, I am honored to share some exciting news that reflects my unwavering commitment to improving the quality of life in South Cobb. This year, I am pledging my entire $1 million capital contingency in support of the construction of the new South Cobb Health Complex, which will sit at the old Magnolia apartment site. This project represents a vital investment in the health and well-being of our community. With this new facility, we will expand access to critical health services, promote wellness, and ensure that every resident has the resources they need to thrive. I look forward to seeing this vision come to life and the positive impact it will have for generations to come. Together, we are building a healthier, stronger South Cobb. Thank you, and thank you to my board for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, I'm hoping that we will have a healthier and stronger Board of Commissioners coming up in this next year. We've had a very difficult discussion today. We're hoping that it will be a foundation for us to move forward and have a prosperous new year, as there are a lot of things for us to address together, and I believe that we can confidently do that working together. Speaking of working, there are some people that we do need to recognize again. Certainly want to thank our Fire Chief, our Director, Sharon Stanley, and also our Library Director, Helen Poyer, for all of your service to this county. And also want to thank our DA, DA Brody, and also our State Court Clerk, Robin Bishop, for their arduous service for the citizens of Cobb County. We know that we could not accomplish all that we have done without all of them helping to move our county forward. With that, happy holidays and see you in the new year.